Good evening, everyone. Bonjour et bonne soirée à tout le monde. My name is Alex Neve. I'm a human rights lawyer based here in Ottawa, and I'm one of the four commissioners and pleased to be joined this evening by two of my fellow commissioners who will introduce themselves in a moment. Our fourth colleague, Monia Mazig, is not part of the session this evening, but is certainly actively engaged in other sessions. I'd like to begin by noting that, I believe we are, a number of us are joining from different locations, but virtually we are gathering here in unceded and unsurrendered Algonquin territory. And of course, this is a commission that is very focused on what happened in unceded and unsurrendered Algonquin Anishnaabik territory back in February. And in fact, the mandate, the focus on the notion of occupation of lands, I think really resonates with that recognition of whose lands and territories these are and what the respect and understanding for that was during February as well. And that's certainly something that we've been holding close and keeping very much at the forefront as we've been moving through these hearings and will continue to do so. It also points to the fact that, at the end of the day, anything and everything about what we're examining, what we're hearing, and the very purpose of the Ottawa People's Commission process in the first place is all about human rights. And not only the very obvious human right that I think everyone first thinks of when they remember what happened in Ottawa in February, and that is that very important essential human right to peaceful protest, which is certainly very much in the mix and is something we're considering and assessing as we hear people's testimonies. But we're also very concerned about and live to the much broader human rights framework that is at play here, the human rights framework that is all about the lives and reality of the thousands of individuals who live in the impacted communities, who work in the impacted communities. And that really was about rights across the spectrum, rights around housing and healthcare, safety, security, non-discrimination, safety, and many, many other concerns. And we've certainly been hearing powerful accounts from dozens of witnesses who have shared the ways in which this convoy occupation had very real impact on many of those rights. The People's Commission itself, as its name suggests, is popularly generated. It's a community-based initiative that is very much a key element to what members of the community broadly felt needed to be an essential piece of the response to the disruption and frankly, for many members of the community, the trauma of what happened during February's occupation, which had such impact for residents, workers, businesses, and even people who regularly just pass through Centertown. And the goal of convening this process was, and it is, very much about two things. It is for this to be a venue and a process that's about both healing and about justice. And doing so by hearing the stories, the firsthand personal accounts and experiences of those who were impacted the most by what happened in February. As part of that, we're examining what people's interactions and experiences were with government and with police and with each other as well. And obviously, what their experience was with the convoy protesters. All of that is directed towards ultimately pulling together a report, which will be a compilation and an overview of what we have heard and certainly will include a set of recommendations, a recommendations which come from those community voices as to how things could be done better next time to ensure that there aren't the kinds of human rights abuse that people went through. This is the next in a series of online sessions we've been holding. We've also been having in-person sessions. In fact, we just had one on the weekend at the Jack Purcell Community Centre. And through both of those online and in-person sessions, we've been hearing from a number of courageous individuals who have come forward to share their accounts. We are also been holding what we've been calling "community meetings", which rather than the model of hearing one after another from individual witnesses, proceed more as a discussion and a dialogue amongst a group. And those have tended to be focused on thematic concerns such as Asian seniors and women living in shelters and others coming up with members of the Indigenous community, the Muslim community, the 2SLGBTQI+ community and other such groups. We've also been receiving a number of written submissions and certainly are very keen to continue to do so. So that lays the ground a little bit as to what this is about and why this has been convened. And I'm going to turn things over to my colleague, Leilani Farha, who's going to set things up a bit more directly as to what's happening tonight.
Thanks, Alex. And yes, I'm Leilani. My last name's Farha. I am also a human rights lawyer and very privileged and pleased to sit with the commissioners on this People's Commission. I think as the formal inquiries have rolled out or are in the midst of being rolled out, I think we're starting to really understand the importance more so than even when we started out of this People's Commission. Because of course, the more formal inquiries haven't had such an opportunity for such a vast array of residents to testify. I think that these sorts of commissions don't happen often enough that they are essential to democracy and to a fulsome and working democracy so that, you know, everyone can be heard and participate in democracy. I'm particularly looking forward to tonight's testimonies because journalists who we're focusing on tonight are such an important part of a robust democracy. And I have a feeling the speakers will have very particular insights that will be really useful for us as a commission. How we're going to roll? I think we only have three speakers tonight or testifiers, which gives us some nice wiggle room. So I'm not going to limit you to the five minutes that we've had to with other people who have testified. But what we'd like you to do is make some comments, as you wish. And then each of the commissioners may have some questions, follow-up questions for you. And of course, we ask that everyone be respectful and not use any offensive language or be disruptive. And hopefully, this won't be, we won't be Zoom bombed or anything like that. I think we've already gone through. There is interpretation available for those who need down at the bottom of your screen. And so I don't really have much more to say. I think I'd like us to get underway. So if the, I think, is Evan the first speaker? I think so. Evan, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Leilani and Alex. I very much appreciate being invited to this on the unceded Algonquin territory that we acknowledge. I think what the Ottawa People's Commission has been doing is vital because it's a grassroots community initiative about an event that happened to the community by another grassroots initiative. And there has been a general sense that throughout the RLO Commission, we have heard about the failings or the successes, depending on your point of view of the law enforcement of officials. And we spent an enormous amount of time understanding the trucker protests and the motivations. One thing that we've all commented on in the RLO Commission is the very little time that the residents and the citizens have to discuss their point of view on a situation that tests reasonable limits of freedoms and tests our Section 2 peaceful assembly rights. These are fundamental rights and ought to be debated and ought to be tested. And as a journalist, I'm going to give my very specific view. I'm not going to speak on behalf of all journalists. I'm certainly not going to speak on behalf of many other journalists who have many different experiences than I did. Very much that's tied to lots of different factors. It could be tied to sexuality, gender, race. There were lots of experiences. And the first thing I want to say is, let's not generalize. And I say that specifically because when I covered the convoy, I specifically tried not to generalize either. And in generalizing, it's very dangerous. We can have descriptions. I think there are ways to be descriptive about large events without generalizing about motives. By the same token, there is a very easy way to try to individuate motives, atomize motives, to say, well, I was here for a different reason. And that is an attempt to obviate and get away from culpability, responsibility. And when people do join a big group, they are seeding part of their own message identity. And therefore, they cannot suddenly say, well, I was there for different reasons. I'm a good person, even though they're a lot in support. So it's a tricky balance to avoid generalizing, but by the same token, to not let individuals disassociate themselves from the collective action, which in and of itself, size and scope of the collective action is why we're here in the first place. So it's a very tricky balance. So I'll speak from a very individual point of view about what I saw and what I covered. And again, I just want to reiterate. One of the reasons I decided to participate in the Ottawa's People's Commission is because, one, I respect the residences. I'm a resident. And I saw this impact my teams at CTV, my colleagues, my friends, and many of my fellow residences. But two, because I do believe that every point of view matters and I have a specific point of view and others do as well. So let me just give three kind of bigger picture things. And Leilani, give me an idea of time. Just give me a wave. I don't want to overstate my time in any way. Look, my job as a journalist is to be skeptical. And my job as a journalist is not to carry water for a government or a movement. I'm not an activist. I don't pretend to be an activist. I'm not joining the Ottawa's People's Commission to testify as an activist. I'm a journalist and I'm trying to cover things fairly. My philosophy in covering the protests that happened in late January, early February 2022 in Ottawa, and then around the country, but the one that I was most was to try to understand it on a very specific level. And to that end, because it was in my neighborhood and at my doorstep, I tried every single day to go out. And I think I did for three-plus weeks. And I met hundreds of the protesters. I met the leadership. I tried to speak with them. I tried to back-channel to them. And at the same time, I was talking to government officials to try to get a fair picture. My one rule was when I was live on television, of which I was live often there, my rule of journalistic coverage was do not use people as a background. You often see journalists doing a live hit and they're on the scene, but they let people. If someone wanted to talk to me during a live hit, I immediately let them. I made sure to interact because I know there's a huge distress with mainstream media and I appreciate that. And I stayed out to try to talk to people and give them a point of view and to try to let the live events happen. One, I tried to get as close to the heart of the action as I could. And what that I mean is right with the people, right on the front lines with the police officers and the protesters so I could get a genuine sense of it. Two, don't use people as a backdrop. And three, I wasn't there to judge people. But I was also not there to let facts go unchallenged. So there's a difference between taking a side and allowing or unverified statements that are not factual to be broadcast. And I don't do that. So if someone said something that I didn't, I couldn't understand or I couldn't verify, I would ask them, where is that from? How do you know that? And I think that was very important. They often had answers. And I learned a lot from the people. And I respect people's right, as does, I know it's been said here before, but I want to reiterate it. The right to peaceful assembly, sometimes the right to protest. And we've seen it whether it's pipelines or vaccines. I have no problem with that. That's the exercise of people's right and the reasonable limits of protest and the limits of freedom. But what happened in Ottawa over three weeks as a journalist is experience was that, one, the assumption was that I was there as a government mouthpiece. And this is a, obviously, a difficulty that both mainstream media has to justify its existence as an objective source. And also that this was part of what many people believe in that protest, that the journalists and the mainstream media were not there, which is why I didn't mind getting filmed. I was filmed a lot. I didn't mind being yelled at. I traveled around the world in my many long careers. And this was by far not the most violent or worrisome place. Now, again, I say that, and I don't mean this. My experience is very different. I'm a six-foot-four man. You know, I'm over 200 pounds. I'm wearing a huge jacket and boots. So I physically did not feel intimidated. And I have a lot of experience in these kind of situations. So I was never physically intimidated. But many of my colleagues would not leave their apartment. Colleagues that I work with did not come to work. We work in the World Exchange Tower because they feared going outside. There are visible minority, people of color, BIPOC, members of my team that refused to go outside for weeks. They did not feel comfortable, could not come to work. There were, and again, these are very personal. This is their city. This is their right to go to work. I happen to not feel being candid. And it's not that I'm trying to prove anything. I just don't, you know, I got into this, my job because kind of situations do not make me uncomfortable. Otherwise, I wouldn't be a reporter. But I saw members of friends, family. They did not go out. They were, they could not sleep. They were exhausted. They were terrified. Many of the protesters would come to me and I was spat on or spat at. As you know, on January 29th, someone tossed a frozen full beer can at me as I was reporting. It was on camera. Of course, it was immediately doubted. We literally have it on camera as we showed it on the national, as it flew by my head, probably missed me by about an inch and hit our camera gear. Again, you know, that's a form of aggravated assault. You're a lawyer, but I didn't, we didn't press charges. We actually saw the kid that did it, the young man. Later, I walked right by him. I saw him and his group, the people who had tried to do it. People were right in our face very frequently. Maybe I had that frequently on camera. February 18th, a guy, two guys, one guy with a shovel and a beard and sunglasses screaming, move back, move back to me. It was on camera. And you know, again, I tried to engage him in conversation. And I simply said, no. And there were a few times where we had one security person. And during some of the more intense times, I was told because we were to leave because we were in danger, quote unquote. I didn't, it was tense. I didn't feel, I felt that it could, something could have happened. There was a number of people who were very, very aggressive. And attacking the media was very normal. It was part of the kind of ingredients because the media was seen as complicit. So the environment was unusual for Ottawa. And it was not unusual for a one-day event. And it was probably not even that unusual for a two-day event. But as they settled into two weeks and three weeks, two things happened. One, I got to know many of the protesters. So many of the people who were screaming at me eventually would just see me and talk to me. And I think that was important. Often, the way I would talk to people and police asked me often how I was de-escalating. And I would simply say they'd yell at me. They'd call me Nazi or, you know, virus or, you know, how do you sleep? You're filthy, whatever that insult was. And it happened to all my colleagues. I would say, hey, my name is Evan. What's your name? And I'd put my hand out. Almost immediately, there was this kind of reluctant pause. Like, oh, God, he's not just a journalist, he's a person. And then they weren't just a protester. And then almost that person would human, in the sense, I mean, they're always human, but humane.
Evan, I'm just going to interrupt. Sometimes when you move your head, we're losing your audio, just to be a full story. I know it's those AirPods.
Okay, sorry. And so I would just say that what often when I introduced myself with my first name, they would, it was erratically, the temperature would change and they would talk to me as citizens. And then, by the way, there was very compelling stories. Afghan vet with two children. Want to take it because, you know, many vets were nervous about taking government sanctioned drugs because of the maleficent issue during the Gulf War. Very understandable. He cried at the war memorial. Really beautiful moment. There was many people there that were passionate about this issue and very humane. So I didn't generalize. But in the aggregate, the leadership was egging people on in a very destructive way. The conspiracy theories about the government, about the medical establishment, about the scientific experimentation. And many of the groups that I spoke to had unverifiable things and they did not like to be challenged. And that led to a lot of difficulty. I would say by three weeks, they felt that it was not an occupation because mostly what you heard is, we're very peaceful. Why don't you report that we are good people? And I tweeted out and I said to people, you know, if you took over my house so I couldn't leave and for three weeks you were honking horn in my driveway when I was stuck inside my house, but you told me that you were shoveling my driveway and mowing my lawn, that wouldn't give you the right to take over my home. And that's what they were doing. The citizens pay taxes to have their sidewalk shoveled. They don't need protesters to do it. And the protesters had occupied that place for three weeks. The police were beyond reasonable to the point where many thought they were, the police, many believed they were negligent in their duties. And after three weeks, obviously, then the question is, did the threshold get met for the Emergencies Act? I'm not going to weigh in on that. I questioned, but I will say I spent many, many interviews talking to Bill Blair, David Lametti, the Justice Minister, Public Safety Minister Marco Mandacino, on air many times grilling them on these very things. So I'll just say this and I'll just leave. And I hope to take questions. The voice that is often left out in this were the residences. And they were drowned out by the horns, drowned out by the fact that they were inside, the businesses were shut, that they were not supposed to be there because police didn't want them there. And so they were quiet, not all the time. Obviously, there was some citizen action. I'm not just undermining it. But these voices have not been heard. And so part of the Ottawa People's Commission is to hear some voices. And in a world that is increasingly polarized by voices that take over the public space, I think this is just a very important for us to hear and for me to listen to residents' experience outside of the one that I had as a very privileged and also very unique position that I'm well aware of. That's all. I really appreciate the time and I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks, Evan. I'll pass to my colleagues to see if someone wants. Yep, Debbie, go.
I can start and I'll use this opportunity to introduce myself. Hi, Evan. Hi, everyone else here. My name is Debbie Luciccia. I'm one of the three commissioners on the call today. My background is that I'm a senior leader in a nonprofit here that works on 2SLGBTQ issues in Ottawa, but also nationally. And I just wanted to say thank you to you, Evan, for kind of sharing from your perspective what you witnessed, what you experienced and what your colleagues experienced, especially those who both work and live in the red zone. I do have a few questions. And I did want to start off, and I think you touched on it a little bit at the end. I know you had the opportunity to speak to the protesters and kind of, you know, engage with them in different ways. And I was curious in your recording if you did have the opportunity to talk to residents, did they seek you out for those who did leave their homes at any point? Did you, from a journalistic perspective, witness any interactions of residents with protesters? Just very curious if you saw that at all.
First of all, nice to meet you. Thanks. Thanks for the question and your work on this. I did, you know, in 28 years of reporting, I have never had more feedback on anything I've done locally, you know, or nationally than the work around this from residences and others. There is a need for people, just people just needed to see their city. They just needed to see some recognizable element of civility. And often, they thought, and also, many of my colleagues were doing this work. I certainly do not take in any way, shape or form as if I was doing anything remotely special. There are dozens of remarkable journalists, many of my colleagues at CBC, colleagues at Global, at The Globe, at The Post, they're the star. So again, I just want, I want to, this is not to be self-aggrandizing at all because many, but many of my colleagues said the same thing. Residents were dying to speak to them because they had no voice. And the only way they were watching what was happening was as we were televising it. And the only, often the only interaction they saw with protesters was us because the protesters were yelling at us. And so this was, we were kind of this proxy. Oh, my God, you know, how are, how would I go out there if they're yelling at these people that I see every day? And I did see residents talking back to them. I mean, if you were up on the hill, you saw many residents up there interacting. And I have to say, largely, like, we have to remember, if you look at this protest on multiple angles from, compared to protests you've seen around the world in Europe, for example, this did not, there was not a lot of violence. After three weeks of a heavy-duty protest, I'm not trying to minimize it, but we didn't have huge fights. Even when the police, on the final day, cleared it out on that day where I was right there. But look how the French police acted when they were clearing out protesters. So, you know, this was a very right on the edge. It could have gone either way. But I think residents that I spoke with were overwhelmed and exhausted and anxiety-filled and scared that this, they just didn't know how this was going to end, when it was going to end. And remember, this was also during COVID. So there was other attendant anxieties that people had been building up over two years about the virus, about getting sick. It was very cold. I mean, this was a very uniquely difficult time for people. They were, it was freezing cold. Businesses were shut. The economy had been tanked for so long. People were extremely agitated in general. Even people who supported the vaccine mandates were agitated by it. This was not This was not a particular, and, and I think one last thing I'll say. Most people that I spoke to who were not the protesters were angry that the protesters were absconding, taking the idea that they were the only victims of the pandemic. That they were being particularly targeted and that the true victims of the pandemic were the protesters. And one thing I, I've said, and I, and one of the reasons I'm here tonight is because we, the residents don't have a voice. But forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-two Canadians have died from COVID. Forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-two in two years. As of today. We haven't heard, have there been a commission to hear the families who never got to see their? From them, four point three nine million Canadians had COVID. It was scary. It was frightening. They didn't see that my wife, I remember in the early days was locked in a room alone for thirteen and a half days before she got a test. It was a hellish for her. But that was normal. My uncle died alone in a hospital. Toronto, he's a doctor. His family did not get to see him as he died of COVID. I, when I tweeted that out, protesters told me to my face, he was old, did he die of COVID or with COVID? Of course, he died both of COVID and with COVID. Like, I don't even understand the question. He was alive, he got COVID, he died. I mean, but the residences were angry as if the real victims of this tragic pandemic that was global, that killed forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-two Canadians, infected three point, or four point three million. But these people here were the only victims and therefore they had the right to protest. And everyone else had to deal with, because their rights were trapped. Their rights were no more trampled on than anyone else. They made certain choices like everybody else. And I think it was very frustrating for people to say they'd done all the right things in the sense that they, they'd followed medical advice and science. They were now getting stuck and they just felt helpless. And then, of course, they watched the protesters get three kind of luxuriously protected weeks before finally the police did anything. I mean, I don't think I've ever seen, I mean, one thing the RLO Commission has not really communicated well, is these people had three weeks to basically do whatever they want. They built the city and down, right at the foot of Parliament and took over the G seven capital for three weeks without barely an arrest. The idea that this was a hard police state until the emergency is, is, is defies logic when you were there. And, and, you know, there was almost no enforcement and residents saw that and did not know who was in charge and that's scary.
Thank you. I'll pass it along to one of my colleagues.
I can shorten my answers because they seem too long.
I'm enjoying them. Sure, my colleagues are too. Before you go, Alex, I just want to apologize to Debbie. I should have had you introduce yourself right at the top. My, I am scattered tonight, my bad. Yes.
She rolled with it. Good evening Evan, thanks. Good to see you and thanks so much for joining us and for sharing everything you've shared. I have three questions, so, so, so I'll, I'll, I'll try to not take up too much time in asking the questions to make sure that, that you have ample time to, to respond. The first is I want to pick up on the theme of abandonment. I think you've, you've kind of referenced it in particular to the, you know, what you were hearing from residents about how they felt abandoned by the police, you know, where, why were the police not doing something about this, et cetera? And we've certainly, I'm sure you wouldn't be surprised that that is a theme that has just come up endlessly in everyone's testimony, no matter their background, no matter their, what part of the red zone they lived in, et cetera. And there was, and there's kind of two aspects. One is, is what I've just referenced, which is why weren't the police policing? Why weren't they issuing parking tickets? Why weren't they doing something about this? But the other is, and this isn't just the police, I guess this is more kind of the state in general. Why weren't we getting information? Why weren't we being told what was happening? Why weren't we given updates, bulletins, you know, as residents of this neighborhood to understand what was happening and what we could expect? And, and in an odd to you, in a nod to you and your colleagues, many of them go on to say, if it wasn't for the media, we wouldn't have known, we wouldn't have been able to find out, we wouldn't have been able to therefore kind of make choices about whether we should or should not be going outside our apartment today. What was or was not happening three blocks away from us. I'm, I'm wondering if you had much of a sense of that as you were out there reporting? That there was that, you know, from a human rights perspective, that's a real abdication of state responsibility. There's, you know, there's a vital role to provide information. It's a human right. And it's essential to other human rights, of course. That was really being profoundly abdicated in a meaningful way for the residents of, of the red zone. And I'm wondering how you saw and experienced that? What did you see in terms of that kind of information flow for residents?
I think the RLO Commission has done a couple of good things. First of all, one of the things we've seen is the absolute chaotic and shambolic nature of, of the policing institutions, how they did not work very well together. The former police chief Slowly's testimony was in stark contrast to the reality, I thought. I, I was, as if he was alone out there fighting these narratives and now that may be true, but residents are not here, citizens are not here to understand why the frustrations of the police. The police aren't here to explain and protect. They're here to serve and protect. And they weren't serving and they weren't protecting in the minds of many residents. Now, I don't think this falls on individual police officers, many of whom I spoke with and were incredible. I just want to say that. If you spoke to the individual police officers, many of them were out there working hard, working double shift. They were cold, they were patient, they were getting screamed at. And they didn't want to escalate. And it's easy to yell at police in the same way. I've been at protests where people are screaming at the police to act on a protest about a pipeline or in Caledonia, and why aren't the police doing their job? Policing is hard and there's lots of weapons, there's lots of tools in the, in the police tool belt before they start arresting people in Clarence streets, like. So I understand that. I'm, I'm not here, I'm not a police expert, I'm not here to judge the police. But I will say this, one, the information flow was clearly very poor, clearly very contradictory. Two, my colleagues and I, I think of colleagues like Mackenzie Gray and many others who were, Rachel Aiello, who were filming every day, Glenn McGregor, I'm just talking about at CTV. Gosh, this was true, by the way, of all media outlets, CBC and Global and, you know, we were seeing, we filmed every day, people just breaking the law, you know, just, just parking tickets not enforced. That's confusing to people. Wait, you can, I, I parked my car in the market to go grab a salami at the butcher and I get a ticket if I don't pay. And these guys are parking the rigs for three weeks and they're like, wow, there's no tickets after. Until residents were wondering. I think the gas cans and the jerry cans were a classic example of in a not, and by the way, we've heard the confusion. Police letting protesters into Confederation Park and not in. So I, I think the RLO Commission has exposed that sense of confusion. And when there's confusion and shambolic organization inside, then of course the residences are feeling that on an exponentially higher basis. There's no clear messaging. There was no sense of how this would end. There was no sense of how big this was going to get. There was just very confusing messages on all sides. We were having a difficult time trying to figure out who was in charge. And by the way, we know now that the police were trying to figure out, they didn't trust each other. There was a distrust between the Ottawa Police Service, the OPP and the RCMP, lots of confusion. And, and by the way, some good pushback, like we did hear this week, police officers saying, we don't want to profile people who are peaceful. We don't want, I mean, these are tricky situations. On one side, you don't want overkill by the police to infringe on, on civil liberties and, and start profiling people who are exercising their right to freedom of assembly and peaceful protest. On the same token, they have to do something when this, when the protest crosses a line and becomes courted occupation. And at what point is that and what's the definition of that? So I, I appreciate the tricky nature, but just to answer your question, yes, the information was weak. Yes, this, this sense of being abandoned. Of course, this is beyond obvious to, to everybody on the ground when this went on week after week after week. When you're entering the third week in a G seven country at the foot of Parliament, when not only is there a convoy blocking streets, shutting down businesses, in a free for all. These are people who were then nurtured by political leaders. They were literally getting served coffee and getting their pictures as if this is okay. And so it was very difficult and confusing for residences to know what is now acceptable? What's the law? What a police let go and what a police do? I think I may have heard twenty times or more, people say, well, when this is over, I'm going to park wherever I want. Because there's no, since they're not, you know, I'm livid. And, and, and I do think characterize it as abandonment, Alex, and by the way, great to see you, sir. But because I, I, I don't want to generalize if everybody felt abandoned. But did I hear that there was a sense of chaos and a sense that the police had, were not fulfilling their jobs in a reasonable way? I, I'm not even talking about in a coercive way, in just a reasonable way. And it was quite clear to most people that I spoke to that the police had lost total control of the situation. And of course, we know that because the government was so concerned about the loss of control that they eventually decided the only way to reassert control was to re-invoke the unprecedented use of the Emergencies Act, which has its own questions on civil liberties that is probably beyond the scope of the Ottawa People's Commission's mandate here. But it is a sign that even the government had declared that the police had abandoned or had lost control, or however you want to characterize. The situation was so far out of control, the singularly most extraordinary measure was needed. And you don't need, and Ottawa residences are at the sharp end of feeling that.
You're right, that one is beyond our mandate. Fortunately, we don't have to pass judgment on the Emergencies Act. We'll, we'll leave that to justice for now. But we're certainly hearing a lot about it. Maybe I'll just ask one other question and this, this may be obvious or not. But there's a number of ways in your opening remarks that you referenced, you know, examples of insecurity. Obviously, the, the incident with the frozen beer can, I remember actually seeing that at the time. The fact that you had to have a security guard, et cetera. I'm just wondering, you know, in your many years of reporting from, I guess, let's just focus on reporting from the streets of Ottawa. How unprecedented and unusual was that or was it not? For you to have to experience that kind of insecurity and to take those kinds of security measures?
Well, I think it's, I, 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 I'm not even going to be editorial. I have never had to use a security guard in my life in Canada in thirty years of reporting. I've used them in other places, you know. I've reported from inside Iran. I've reported in many difficult circumstances where we take very heavy security precautions. I have never had to, in Canada, have a security guard. And some of my colleagues had multiple security guards. Now, again, that was a mandate from my company. I walked, I will say this, I walked every single day without a security guard to work and back from work through the, and then spent many hours talking to people. But I would tell you this, my wife wasn't super thrilled about that. And many of my colleagues weren't. They said, you're crazy to do that, you know, any. And even the security guard said that. Now, again, everyone's going to make personal choices of their level of comfort. I just did not feel that anybody was that threatening to me. I really didn't. But it was right on the edge. There are certainly times when we, so was it unprecedented? A hundred percent. It's never happened. Have I ever, look, there's been, I would also like to say to the Ottawa People's Commission, is there is no city in the country that is more experienced with protests and gatherings in that specific place than Ottawa? I mean, Ottawa knows celebrations, Canada Day celebrations, protests. We see protests on Parliament Hill literally every day. I think people, the citizens of Ottawa, understand the nuances of freedom of assembly very well. They understand the reasonable limits. They understand the emotions and the political vectors that underpin protests better than anyone. We've seen it every single day of our lives and the residents that live downtown see it. The embassies that get protested for political events around the world every single day. So you are not talking about a group of people that are kind of, oh my gosh, a protest. These are, you know, let's appreciate, Ottawa citizens are protest veterans. They're used to, they're used to police presence with VIPs, they're used to waiting, they're used to protesters blocking streets and their police habits. Like this is an experienced city. And for that to beyond the regular parameters of a normal protest and get to the point where journalists and many people are scared to go out or they need security guards is completely and utterly unprecedented. And it happened not because people were paranoid or weak, it's because there's a legitimate sense that this could, I mean, the demands of the leaders were such that they, they had said, we were not going to leave. We are going to have, they were talking about numbers of hun, I mean, their numbers were exaggerated in the end. But they were talking about, oh, we're going to have a million trucks or a hundred thousand trucks and fifty thousand trucks. And we're going to be here until the government's gone or we'll be here until all the mandates are. And, you know, residents are like, well, how long is this going to go on for? And after, I remember after two weeks, people were thinking, are, are they settled in here? Is this a, is this a real civil unrest? And the last thing I'll say is it was, it was COVID, it was cold. But we'd also had the January, the echoes of January sixth in the US. And again, I'm not trying to draw a parallel to this group, but you would be, it would be unfair not to say that the insurrection of January sixth certainly had rhyming noises that people were hearing as this gathered. And I think that escalated tension. And yeah, this was very unprecedented.
Thanks very much Evan, and I'll turn it back to you, Lynani.
Thanks. I just have one quick-ish, well, depends on your answer, question. But it, it comes from one of your answers to the other questions. I, I've been quite interested in this idea of sort of who, who was in charge, who was in control? And my colleagues know I was on Parliament Hill when the Michael B. Bo lockdown thing happened. I was in a senate hearing at the time. And it was very clear to those of us who were in lockdown, who was in control. So we knew, I mean, that the head of the RCMP was giving us, I would say hourly updates as to what was happening. You said, we, and I think you meant you and your fellow journalists, were having a difficult time trying to figure out who was in charge. Now, I don't know what it's like to be a journalist, so I don't know how, how one would normally determine that as a journalist. But like, were you turning to the mayor? Were you turning to city councillors? Were you turning to the premier? Were you of the province? Were you turning to the PMO, to the Prime Minister himself? Like, when you say you didn't know who was in charge, who were you turning to? And then seeing, oh, well, they're not in charge, they're not in charge? And that's my question.
Thanks Lynani. I remember that day well. I was literally, so Nathan Cirillo. I was there right after he was shot and I remember that day well and I'm sorry you went through that. And you realize these things resonate for a long time and I'm sure that was a traumatic time for you and for many others. So thanks for sharing that. First of all, when I say who's in control, there was a police operation normally. Let me put it this way, let's say there's a fire. Okay, we have a fire, a fire in downtown Ottawa. Well, there would be a spokesperson and there would be a police and Well, there would be a spokesperson and there would be a police and there'd be a fire chief. And then the city councillor would be there and then the mayor would be there and it was a very serious fire, maybe the province would show up because they're helping. And these are normal channels of responsibility, depending on the scope of the incident. And there's usually an incident response team. And so, you know, journalists are well used to rushing to the scene of small things, whether it's a car accident or big things, whether it's a the shooting on Parliament Hill, which I remember well, and he was, and, and, and of course, the bigger and the more unusual the event, obviously, there's going to be chaos in the leadership structure, but usually what happens is a system sorts itself out. But let's just look at the anatomy of control here. The Ottawa Police Chief was gone, the mayor got rid of Diane Deans from the uh Police Board. The mayor, it turns out, I broke the story of the mayor back channeling with Doug Ford's former um chief of staff uh to, to the truckers. When I broke that story, I was like, wait a second, so are, that was not part, the police chief, you know, who was aware that the mayor and his inner staff were trying to negotiate the trucks? That was a, that was an example of this was just a free for all. And, and the former chief of staff for Doug Ford, who had been actually let go from Doug Ford, he, he, I interviewed him. And he's like, I'm just a citizen. I'm like, wow, so now we've just got citizens and talking to mayors and the mayors talking to the truckers. The police chief is demanding people, and I was talking to sources in the RCMP saying he had made a demand for a thousand police officers with no plan or not. So you're just hearing from, and Rulow, like, we knew this. You talked to the RCMP, they didn't trust the OPS and the OPP didn't know what was going on, and the government was trying to figure out is there going to be a state of emergency? And then the province was saying, well, we want a state of emergency, and the mayor did. And our sources were telling us different things, when is this going to happen? There was absolutely no one who could verifiably speak and you could trust it was going to happen. Uh, if the police said, we are no longer gonna let jerry cans in, and then, you know, we start filming jerry cans being let in, I was like, okay, well, I guess that was a meaningless moment. And so um when I say we, journalists are trying to source out a valuable source to communicate to our, our listeners, our readers and our viewers credible information so the citizens can say, oh, the police are gonna start this action or this is happening. But then that would be contradicted because almost all our sources were wrong. Because they were, they were people in positions of authority, but there was no plan. And I think the Rulow Commission has been Exhibit A on the chaos until the very end, when they set up a brand, and remember, there was a new infrastructure, a new system set up by the RCMP and the OPP decided to take more charge and they put the, uh, and then, of course, slowly left. And, and the interim police chief, who did a superb job, um, trying, he was a much better, more open communicator. I remember he called me right away. He said, I wanna know what we can do better. I was like, wow, the police chief is actually there, you know, I got a call off the record saying, what's it like on the ground? And, you know, I can't help the police, I'm not there to, but at least he's trying to get a picture of what's going on because even he realized I'm not getting a good sense of it. So uh, it's very unusual. If the, remember, if the journalists don't know who to speak to, and the police don't know who to speak to, and the government doesn't know who to speak to, and the mayors doing side back channeling, and private citizens are trying to negotiate moving trucks. The average resident who's trying to get through their life, who's been locked up for two years, who's living, trying to, you know, pay their bills. They still have all the same medical concerns, anxieties that, that a regular day in the life. And then they're layered upon this, how are they supposed to make head or tails of this? It was impossible.
That's great. Thank you so much. I think that ends our questions and our time with you. Um, a big thanks, Evan, that was very helpful. I'm sure my, my colleagues are nodding, so there you go.
Uh, I'd just like to say thanks. Please continue the work from the Ottawa People's Commission. I know it's hard work. I think the citizens really need a voice. It would be better for me as a journalist to be listening, not talking, so I will try to listen. And um I know you've got some excellent journalists coming up who will have a, a different perspective and a very valuable one. So thank you again, and, and, and I, I, I really appreciate the time and the effort you've all made.
Thanks. So our second speaker. I think we're ready.
Hi.
Hi there.
Um, I wasn't sure if you were going to unmute or I was supposed to, so.
Oh, so there, there you go. And please feel free to introduce yourself.
Um, my name is Erica Eiffel. I am a policy and politics equity columnist for The Hill Times. Um, I'm also a freelancer and written a whole bunch of places. Um, I host a weekly podcast, political, political and policy and pop culture from an intersectional lens called The Bad and Bitchy Podcast, and I am also an economist. So that's as I, um, hello, commission, thank you for having me on. I know I'm supposed to do five minutes. We'll see how that goes. I don't know if I'll be under or over, but I'll, I'll try to keep it. Um, I have been writing about, let me, let me just say that the topics I write about are specifically from the lens of marginalized communities. Um, that has made me a target over time, to which I don't know, I just, it hasn't really been an issue until recently. So um, January came around, uh, I saw what was happening. The, the truckers basically told us they were coming for like at least five days before on Twitter. All of Twitter knew they were coming, five or week, five days or a week before. Um, when they did come, uh, I, you know, I live in Hintonburg, which is a little bit west of Ottawa, it's um next to Chinatown. It's about a twenty-five minute walk to, to the city. Um, I could hear the hordes from where I lived. So I can only imagine how, what it was like for downtown Ottawaans. Now, I did see the Nazi flags and the ra- and the fascist paraphernalia and the racist paraphernalia, the anti-two S L G B Q language, all of that. And um uh, I saw, I heard a lot of use of progressive language that was manipulated for those ends such as my body, my choice. Now, where, now me, when I hear those things, one thing um resonates with me, and that's white supremacy. And I figured for the first couple of days or so, that's not a place where I should be, for my own safety. As um a black woman who is a journalist, so I've already three strikes against me in their eyes, right? So um, but I did go down there because I'm a journalist and I have a curious mind. And um, this is what I noticed. I think people need to realize that I went on Metcalf Street. And Metcalf Street was everything the journalists said. It was parties, it was laughing, it was da-da-da-da-da. Fine, um. However, you go over a few streets to Kent Street, and it was a completely different vibe. It was menacing, it was hostile, and it looked like at any point in time, violence could erupt. Because I walked up there, because I, I think I was actually doing something, and I walked up Kent Street. And that's what I felt. And I realized that Metcalf was the um, the veneer. Kent was real. And so I think that, so I took a few pictures, and one of the pictures, there was a truck that said, um, this is not about vaccine mandates, this is about freedom. Now, when I say, when I see, this is not about the reason that everybody has been, has been um reporting that this is the reason, then I begin to ask questions, and I was around when United We Roll came in. I saw them, I was in downtown Ottawa when they came in, and it was much the same vibe. Very menacing, very much, Erica, you as a black woman need not be here if you want to ensure your safety. And so I want to be here to talk for um a lot of BIPOC experiences, a lot of, a lot of marginalized experiences. One of the things that me and my podcast did was when we saw this, is that we actually had it hosted a Twitter space specifically for centering BIPOC LGBTQ and marginalized voices. Because what we found was the residents who did speak were not of those groups. And the things that we heard can be summed up with a lot of those residents were equally af- as afraid of the Ottawa Police as they were of the protesters. First of all, because of previous um negative engagement with the police on other days. We're talking people with disabilities, we're talking to S L G B T Q people, we're talking racialized people, we're talking people with with precarious immigration status, all of those things, the people who are usually our I want to just point out. Um, they are the ones, I think, were, who were the most disaffected because they carried us on their backs during the pandemic. Right? And we were still going through a pandemic, and Omicron had, was a big deal it during uh the Christmas holidays. So I just want to set that stage, that these are the people who could not stay home, who did not have sick days. And who were carrying this entire nation on their backs. They were the ones saying to us, number one, we're afraid of the police. Number two, the Rito Mall shutdown was a big economic disadvantage to these people. Why? Some of those people pitch in to the family um revenue or the family financial pot through these jobs. Right? And they could be going to school, they lost money. And I really want to emphasize that because that's one of the things we heard. That that shutdown was a major financial disadvantage to those people who, again, were the essential workers. Um, other things we heard were that people with disabilities could not get around. They could, because of the honking, because of the intimidation, because of all of the things that were ta- that were said before, um, when uh Mr. Solomon uh gave his, his speech. Uh, his statement. So another thing we heard about is the, was the threat of sexual assault by these, by these quote unquote, I will call them occupiers because I don't feel like this was a real protest. I honestly feel like it was a siege. And there was a grave concern about sexual assault and about um, having to deal with not only the sexual assault or the sexual harassment. I know, I know there are a lot of women downtown who experienced sexual harassment from these occupiers. And all of those things were the experiences of downtown residents. Like I said, I live in Hintonburg. Um, I went to downtown um, a few, a couple of times a week. I saw that in the beginning, they were all there all the time, every day, all day. I saw on that Lower Bank Street closer to Gladstone during the week, it was calmer. As in, in about the second week, not the first week and about the second week. Um, but it would ramp up over the weekend. So there definitely was sort of like um a flow and influx of trucks during the weekend that would, that would, some of them would slowly phase out probably to the outer, I'm guessing, to the outer areas on a weekday. This was highly coordinated in that way. And so um, when it comes to uh I'm not sure how many people knew what. But what I saw was over time, a coordinated effort. Also, um, I had something else to say, and ah, ah, the Ottawa Police. So as I said, I live in Hintonburg where the Ottawa Police killed an unbacked black man, Abdir Man Abdi, who um, and this is the same police, who um, when the Justice for Abdir Man Abdi Coalition, the Ottawa Black Diasporical Diasporical Diasporicalition Coalition um, held a peaceful protest. And when I say peaceful, they weren't harming anybody. They weren't, they weren't um giving sexual threats to anybody, sexual assault threats to anybody. Uh, they weren't um doing anything to, to um disturb people with disabilities. When they had a protest, the Ottawa Police were swift to clear them out, and I'm wondering, what is the difference? Other, also, the Ottawa Police received eleven point five million dollars extra in November twenty twenty-one. So to say that they didn't have money or they didn't have personnel is ridiculous. Thirdly, when I saw the Ottawa Police out there, they were a little bit chummy. I saw them talking to protesters, I saw them standing. I don't believe that the Ottawa Police were just um uh, in, in act. I think, I really do think it's more nefarious than that. So uh, and we've had reports that the Ottawa Police have um, that, that that there are some that are sympathetic with this convoy. So if you are of a marginalized community or from a marginalized community, why should you trust them? You were left on your own in good times, and as the residents of downtown, all of them who are also working class, by the way, some of them, a lot of them, were abandoned by the city and by the police especially. Um, I'm gonna add something else, and maybe this is not of your scope, but I do want it on record, so. The consequence of me reporting on the convoy, writing about the convoy and tweeting about the convoy is that I got targeted along with others um, by a campaign of hate by a groups that were at the convoy. And let's not forget the Diagon was at the convoy, let's not forget that there were other far-right groups there. And so I know there were people there who probably got caught up or whatever, but I can't speak for them. As an adult, you are the company you keep. You should have figured that out before you signed up for, to, to go out there, in my opinion. Um, so there is a nefarious element to that, this. I'm still dealing with the after effects of that hate campaign. So let's not, let's not think that this is one and done. This convoy was a watershed for the far-right and white supremacy in this country. And to be fair, for those who say, well, I'm not about that, so you can't tar me with the same brush. You were there, nobody asked, no, you didn't have to be there. You could have protested on your own little, in your own place, but you didn't have to be there. You came there with people who don Nazi flags, far-right paraphernalia, and whose organizers are connected to those groups, then I don't know what to say. So that's, that's what I have to, that's my piece. Questions?
Thanks, Erica. I'll throw it to my colleagues. Debbie, Alex, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd love to start. Hi, Erica, good to see you.
Hi, Debbie.
Um, I have two questions. Um, I think why, so one more pertaining to conversations you've had with kind of marginalized folks. Kind of marginalized folks who are living in the Redstone downtown and then the other one about. What you witnessed as a journalist while you were kinda going and kinda scoping um the area. So my first question, um, and I'm, I'm really happy that you, you framed it this way, um. Because this is something that we've been hearing a lot, um, in our, our testimony so far, especially from marginalized folks, is that, that, that. Equal fear of the police and equal fear of the protesters. And so I'm curious from, you know, your perspectives as someone who's like documenting what people are saying. You, we also created a space where these community members could share their perspectives. I'm curious if the people that you spoke to kinda s- um, shared their. Experiences specifically witnessing the hypocrisy that you've already pointed to, that hypocrisy around. Um, the lack of action over the last three weeks, uh, those three weeks, um. The hypocrisy on different responses to different actions we've seen in the city led by marginalized people. I just really wanted to, to hear from, from you, what you heard, what people felt comfortable sharing in those spaces because. One thing that I was witness to during um the, the occupation is that. People were craving the space to have that story shared. And I think um Evan um mentioned that at the end, that people were dying to speak to someone who would listen. And I just wanna know for this particular group of people, what they were able to share with you.
Well, let me just say Debbie, that space was, um. Supposed to be an hour, it lasted two hours and forty five minutes. Because we, we just felt that we needed to hear everybody and people were coming up to, and people were telling us. Oh my god, thank you for this space because we have nowhere else to go. Because even, and I know this, um, um, I'm a fan of Evan's work, um. Even mainstream media forgets them. And they felt forgotten by mainstream media as well as the police. As well as um the powers that be, the mayor, the police chief, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so for example, I heard a lot from black people. And black people were saying that the Ottawa police were aggressive in terms of pull, more aggressive. In, 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 in pulling over black people. For random traffic stops than they were in terms of ticketing or doing anything about the convoy. I've talked to black people who have been harassed. And who have felt that, who have looked at this and said, you see, this is why we don't trust the police. We cannot trust the police because no matter what happens, even if we are not the perpetrators. It is dangerous to go downtown because we will be arbitrarily stopped. And ticketed, I heard a lot about this, it's funny that um Evan was saying that. You know, people weren't getting ticketed, black people were getting ticketed, it's, it's, it's not. Unfortunately, that was the reality, I had somebody tell me they were ticketed outside Farm Boy. While the police, uh, Farm Boy on Metcalf, uh, be, while the police did nothing about the noise that was happening. So um, when we talk about the police response, I don't give the police as much room. For um, understanding, because like I said, I live in Hintonburg and I heard from a lot of people. Uh, to SLGPTQ people, the same thing. That police harassment of those communities continued. While the convoy was left to do whatever they wanted to. And your second question, I forgot your second question Debbie.
My second question's coming, um, I, I, I wanted to also ask Evan this, but we didn't have time. But I do wanna pose this to you because um, I, I'm not too sure. You had any signifiers that you were a journalist, whereas for um, our traditional media folks. They have their gear, they have maybe their credentials that are present that really signifies, these are journalists and so. I wanted to essentially ask you from your perspective, if you saw. Other types of media be well received by the protesters. Um, if that was something that you observed at all and I, I say other type of media.
Mainstream media, honestly, um, I, I am not. I did go up to uh Wellington and saw how media was interacting. Let's be honest, these were a bunch of white guys, okay? In media that I saw and, um. I didn't see any confrontation or anything like that, I, I saw people just. Like around Metcalf and um, the media that was there, i- it looked really normal to me. And it looked like a normal exchange, it didn't look like there was, now I am not, I just wanna say. That, like I said, I was more out there the second and third week, the first week I have no idea about because. Once I saw those Nazi symbols Debbie, you know that I was staying home, okay? So I am not here to discredit anyone else's, you know, experience whatsoever. Um, but a lot of the media I saw were white, a lot of the media I saw were male. And there wasn't a time where I thought, oh, this is confrontational. Or that they were angry, um. Uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I have, I was, like, I have heard the media vitriol. As usual, I, I heard it personally in terms of online, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm sure that went on, I'm positive it did. I know some spit was shared somewhere, you know what I mean? But for me, what I saw, and that's because I saw media close to Metcalf, where they were trying to. Position themselves as, hey, we're good for everybody, we're not violent, we're not trying to do anything. Meanwhile, they're trying to overthrow the government, so, so let, let us not forget that. Um, the reason I say there, it was, it was at least somewhat organized is that it was organized to have a veneer. Right? A veneer of non-violence, and I use that in heavy quotations. In order to obfuscate whatever the, the, the idea was on Kent Street. I cannot, I cannot emphasize, you know, I still feel it viscerally, the difference. Till now, when I walk on those streets. Thank you.
Alex, did you wanna go ahead?
Sure, uh, thank you so much for, for being here Erica and for. Uh, for sharing and for, and for everything you were doing um, out on the streets during those, uh, to say the least, very difficult couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Um, I was wondering if you could share to the, to the, to the extent that you're comfortable doing so. Uh, share with us a bit more what you were speaking about towards the end of your comments, which was. Um, which was the campaign of hate uh that uh was directed against you. Um, I, um, I, I, I mean, I, I, I guess firstly to give us a bit more of a sense of. Of what that entailed, you know, how much of it was happening on the street, how much of it was online, et cetera. Um, I'm also curious, you know, picking up on this theme of, you know, the police and who they do and do not protect. Um, where, if at all, were the police in that uh for you? Um, would you even have considered turning to the police? Uh, if not, why not? And, and kind of your reflections on. I guess the role of the police when it comes to media freedom is particularly for journalists who are perhaps. The most likely to be threatened and at risk.
Well, um, on Canada Day. As you know, there was a, a bikers-esque sort of similar. Um, protest against vaccines or freedom, I don't even know what it is now, um. On that day, I received. My first piece of, of hate mail, which honestly sounded like every other piece of hate mail I've gotten. I just looked for certain words, the N word and the B word, and since they were present, I was like, okay, we're good. Um, on that day, a similar emails were sent to two other journalists of color. Um, the first and female, no, two other female journal, journalists of color. Fast forward early August and I received a very um disturbing email. Uh, that said all the N words, um, that I was. I was on a fun old school wall with printout pics of all the Canadian media C words. That needed to be Boogaloo, the F out of Canada, and there was Rachel Gilmore C word and Erica I feel. And some other fat black lobster, anyway, you get the point. So there were a few more of these. Um, that would be sent to me, Rachel and Rachel Gilmore. Who was also reporting on the convoy, but not only the convoy, but just the rise in the far right particularly. And I would say she gets a lot and Sabah eats a zaz from the Toronto Star. So the three of us were subjected to this online campaign of hate. And one of my emails was actually signed the Boogaloo Boys. So I know this is a far right group. Um, the connection between that and the convoy mostly came on Twitter. Where, you know, I was talked about in their spaces about. Being one of those journalist media C words. Who, because I said that they were insurrectionists and I said they were white supremacists and I said that they were racist. That's, that's why they hate me apparently. And so, um, uh, so that, that was difficult. It was difficult because I literally had to leave my house for a week. So, um, because I feared for my safety. And the Ottawa police at first did not take this seriously. They were supposed to, I, I submitted, submitted my complaint online. Uh, they were supposed to get back to me within twenty four hours, they got back to me in a week. Um, then basically, uh, what happened was me, Sabah and Rachel got together. With our media organizations. And we had a meeting about how we were gonna respond to this. And what we decided was that we're going to write an open letter to. The Ottawa Police, the Toronto Police for Sabah is, and um, by then, I, I think it had. Uh, this, this online hate campaign has, had expanded to anybody who supported us. And so, um. We said in the open letter that the, uh, some of the journalists were out in Edmonton. And we said that these cases, Edmonton, Ottawa and Toronto need to be joined, need to be ju- like, it needs to be one case. We, I also said that one of the things that I see is happening. Is that we report to our local precincts and they take data. And that's all well and good, but data is nothing if you don't do anything with it. There is no further, there's no process to send this data to. Um, a centralized national agency that deals with online hate. Um, or. Far right hate or anything like that, they just keep it in-house and none of these things is connected. So we asked for them to be connected and that's what I told them. Well, the Ottawa police eventually called me back and, and basically parroted to me exactly what we put, put in that letter. So the basic, so I had to come up with their response, which they then told me as though they were doing something. And they were not, cuz I've yet to hear from them right now, I don't know where they are in the case. They told me at the outset, eh, it's unlikely we're gonna catch this person. First of all, you're assuming it's a person. Second of all, okay, you've given up before you've even begun. And so I don't think the police takes this seriously, I don't, I don't believe the police have a resource problem. I believe they have a resource allocation problem, because as I said before, black people continue. To be harassed and stopped during that occupation, so obviously there's a lot of police dollars going to that. But there isn't, there aren't a lot of police dollars going to hate, also, I don't. Get the sense that the Ottawa police loves journalists either. Especially those who don't like the police, I've given deputations in front of the Ottawa Services Police Porch challenging the police. Why would they help me? And I'm black and a woman, come, come, come now. The Ottawa police who killed Abdir Man Abdi in my neighborhood, again, this is, it all goes together, it all connects. And so I started feeling abandoned too, um. So again, the Ottawa police, even out of this, continues to abandon its citizens cuz I pay taxes to. I may not like the police, but I damn well pay taxes to them. They don't have to like me, they just have to do their job.
Alright, thank you so much for sharing that Erica.
Thank you.
Uh, Leilani, over to you.
Thanks, actually, um, Erica, first of all, I, I wanna thank you because you um exposed a kind of thing I hadn't. Hadn't really thought through, um.
Which part?
Well, a couple, a couple of things actually, the um ongoing. Um, hostility, harassment, um, bu- by the Ottawa police. Against black population in Ottawa. I hadn't, I mean, I never really thought about it, was that, I, I know that that's a pattern. I never thought, oh, was this a pattern that continued during the occupation, so that's very revelatory and, and I appreciate that very much. Um.
And if it's happening to black people, I'm sure it's happening to indigenous people, I just wanna say that. And, and to us, and people, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, exactly, and the other part that I hadn't contemplated. Was that you were unable to do your job. I mean, I thought about other people not being able to do their jobs. People going to work, persons with disabilities not able to leave, but I hadn't actually thought about a black female journalist. Who should be able to do her job in these circumstances, which is to go out on the street and report. And the fact that there was this obvious hatred and hostility on the streets of the town where you are a journalist. It just, that hadn't really, I just had not contemplated that, so really, I don't have questions for you, I have a big thanks. I am of course, um, deeply, and my fellow commissioners are too, I'm sure, deeply appreciative of you taking the time. To tell us what you've told us and to have the courage to keep on doing your job, uh, and.
I, may I just say, I. Marginalized communities in this country, in this city, in this province need a voice and they don't have one in mainstream media. I mean, every now and then mainstream media does a hit, you know, way after. The issue has already played out and they're like, oh yeah, those people, right? We don't have. I, I'm probably, I'm thinking about it, tree part of car, I'm thinking of the star would probably be the other one. We're probably the only two in the country who really center these communities.
Yeah.
Angela Francis does a lot too at the Toronto Star, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, um, thank her and Emily, Emily Nicola. Right?
No, but the fact that you can name them.
The fact is that I can name them and they're on one hand.
Yeah.
And it's one thing to speak to residents, it's another thing to speak to those who already have. It's another thing to speak to those who already have precarious relations with. City Hall, I would say through the police. And that is a major issue that we found out, well, that, that was told to us during that Twitter space. That Twitter space was so very important that people till this day will say to me. Thank you for doing that because our concerns were not centered anywhere else. Right? And the picture looks different once you center those concerns. It's not just about, uh, police are frazzled. It's like, really? These are police who have historically and currently harassed these communities.
Yeah.
And these, and I, you know, there had to be, I also want to say shout out to the Ottawa citizens and the groups. Who actually did the work of mutual aid. Okay, so I want to say how important that's something else we heard in the Twitter space. That the people who did mutual aid, whether it be um Ottawa, Black. Ah, Diaspora Coalition or, or whomever. Um, I know a lot of groups did a lot of mutual aid. I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't have their names off the top tip of my tongue, but they did. And that was a lifeline for people with disabilities who could not go out. Right? Because of the honking, just to get groceries, to go to their appointments, their doctor's appointments, right? Um, to S L G B T Q, but same thing, black people, same thing. Right? Those mutual aid. People, I know Catherine McKenney and Sean Menard did their own sort of mutual aid thing too. I want to shout them out. Um, because they were visible in the community. They were a proxy. But I also want to make sure that if the city really wants to build healthy communities. You, we will do something. We will have policies that center those people. And when we look at police funding and the Ottawa Police, I think this emergency. This Emergencies Act Commission is showing not just how inept the, the Ottawa Police is, but the. Their nefarious actors who have power within the Ottawa Police. And I think to ignore that would be, would be a disservice. To those same people who see it every day. They continued with their harassment of those communities. While hands off to the convoy, because how come they didn't know how to do anything all of a sudden? Because the, the police respond differently depending on who the protesters are. And what they're protesting for. Because to expound this outside of a racial issue, I'm looking at the G two, G twenty protests, for example. Right? So let's not pretend that this was a regular protest that was really an occupation and that the Ottawa Police were just inept. They weren't just inept. They were nefarious at times.
Thank you for that. Um, and I, it's such a, it's a, the way you summarized all of that, super helpful as you know. Alex said at the. Top that we're really interested in. The human rights dimensions of all of this and the broad human rights dimensions. And I think you've helped us really clearly in terms of. You know, imagining, well, what would a hu- a human rights approach to this have looked like? And uh, without your evidence, um, I think we, we, we would come to lesser conclusions. So thank you so very much.
I'm gonna leave with this statement. If you're not centering race, gender and class in your policy and your responses, then I'm not sure what you're doing. Because if you're not centering the people at the tails, if you want to think of the bell curve. Then I, again, I don't know what you're doing. That's, that's, that's it because these are most vulnerable. We're only as strong as them. Let's be honest. That's, that's what I believe. And that's the way I write. And I, I will continue to do so, um, you know, um. Email campaign or not. Because I really do think I will never forget the response of that, of that Twitter space. And it just goes to show that there's a huge need out there. So I will leave you with that. And I will say, thank you for hearing me and thank you for inviting me and I appreciate it. And I will sit back and I will also listen.
Thank you so much, Erica.
Yeah, huge thanks.
So shall we go straight to our third or do my commissioners need a break? Everyone, okay? Good. Let's go to our third and final for the evening. I'm just gonna step aside and open my window. It got, actually got warm in my office.
There we go.
Hi there.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay.
And, and feel free to introduce yourself and get going.
Thanks very much. Um, my name's Brent Jolly. I'm the president of the Canadian Association of Journalists. So we represent approximately now thirteen hundred. Uh, journalists across the country. Uh, our role is primarily in professional development for journalists, so training. Um, and advocacy, particularly around journalists' rights and also the public's right to know. Um, so I think that it's, it's quite salient to what, uh, what the Ottawa People's Commission is undertaking in this study and. You know, thanks very much for, for inviting me because I think there's a lot to learn. Uh, you know, in the heat of the moment, uh, once everything is going on. Uh, there's a lot of, of instant reactions, um, but I think we also need to be able to take the time after. Once the sort of dust has settled, if you will, um, to sort of lessen, take stock of lessons that we can all learn and, and how we can do better for not just. Well, in my consideration for journalists, but also for residents, um, and how we can avoid something like this happen again. Um, I'm really, I'm really heartened to hear that the commission is, is looking at the issue of media freedoms. I know this is not something I've heard too much about from the Rulo Commission. Um, at least to date, um, I haven't, I haven't heard much from them on it. Um, I think Erica's testimony, uh, was very powerful and Evan was, Evan's testimony was excellent in terms of contextualizing and providing sort of that frontline. Uh, view of what some journalists experienced during the occupation earlier this year. Um, now I'm not current, uh, I'm not a resident of Ottawa currently. Uh, I used to live at one point in what would have been the hot zone, right at, uh, Bank and Laurier. So it is sort of personal to me, um, but I'm definitely looking at this from sort of a, a half step removed. Um, given sort of what I heard, um, from members of the association. Uh, other journalists who aren't members of the association and others who, uh, confided in me and told me their stories and their experiences. Um, so I'd like to also acknowledge their voice in the information and testimony that I'm sharing with you this evening. Um, I won't, I won't go over, I'm gonna make a sort of a bridged version because I think Evan and Erica have gotten to a lot of the points that, that I would, I would echo and support. Um, I think the conclusion that I would raise for the commission's consideration tonight is. That the convoy, uh, occupation and, and associated activities were very much an inflection point. Um, and these are, that, that brought together a lot of issues, um, and concerns that haven't been dealt with properly. Um, by government, by, by news organizations and journalists, by civil society. Um, and I think it also is very much a real time case study in how. Things can go wrong and the fact that if we do not take action to ensure that. Uh, we learn from the mistakes that have been made, uh, we are likely bound to repeat those mistakes once again. So that's sort of my general thesis, if you will, from, from coming at this. Um, and, and I'll sort of, I'll sort of go from there a little bit. Um, I can, I can tell you about how over the course of the convoy, um, the C H A, the Canadian Association of Journalists. Was involved in making sure, um, and issuing public statements and urging newsroom leaders. The, to take preemptive action to ensure the safety of journalists and able to, so that they're able to report and to undertake their jobs. Uh, were protected in the wake of increasing threats. Um, as well as explaining some for the public about the role, uh, the, the well critical role a free press plays in a, in a democratic society. Uh, I can tell you a little bit more in specifics about how over the course of the convoy, I spoke to dozens and dozens of reporters. Who felt both intimidated, um, and dehumanized in many regards by the protesters. Um, as, as Evan and Erica were saying, you know, some were spat on, uh, had beer cans thrown at them. Uh, and some were even doxxed, uh, online, uh, where their, you know, their public, private information was put on the internet and people were saying, oh. So and so lives at X Y Z Bank Street, uh, maybe you should go pay them a visit or something after hours. Um, so pretty reprehensible stuff. Um, I can also share with the commission, People's Commission. How many were threatened with physical harm or in many cases, death, um, for the simple fact of, of doing their jobs and that's. Right across the spectrum, but particularly for. Female journalists and, and journalists of color. I'd like to really put that fright in center and, and, and underscore what, what Erica was saying about the sort of racial dynamics that were at play in this instance. Um, I think, you know. To support what Evan was saying that, you know, we journalists go off to places like Kabul or Mogadishu or other far off lands to cover conflicts. Um, I think what the convoy occupation has taught us is that there is very much. A conflict taking place right under our noses and perhaps right across the street or from where we are right now. Um, and I think that that's something that, that we really need to be wary of. Um, and, and be vigilant against because that's a severe and significant threat to democracy and to press freedom in, in Canada and. Um, it's, it's not getting any better by, you know, politely sitting on our, our hands, um, and, and waiting for things to get better. Um, you know. The, the security issue, having security guards was something, um, that Evan brought up that I heard a lot about from, from. Television and video journalists, uh, you know, camera operators, other media workers. Um, you know, the concern with a lot of, uh, video journalists was that the camera became. Uh, a signifier to say, look at me, I'm, I'm a journalist or I work at global television or the CBC or, or CTV or APTN or wherever. Um, and that sort of became, uh, almost like, uh, whatever, you know, those, uh, a light that goes on and sort of attracts the, the flies to it. Um, and that would sort of draw people in and put those individuals at significant. Uh, under significant pressure in some cases or under threat. So I think that that's something just as a visual signifier that, that the commission is worthy of considering. Um, you know, what we saw was unprecedented and I, and I agree with what Evan said to Alex's question earlier. Um, and that we have to be aware of what we're seeing is the ramifications and byproduct of a fervent breed of social and cultural hatred towards journalists. Um, particularly journalists, uh, of color and female journalists. And this is, uh, powered in a lot of ways by the political polarization that we see in our. Um, in our, in our, in our spaces, both online and offline. Um, and by viral disinformation and how that sort of gets beamed into people and, and the echo chambers that are created through. Uh, our social networks, for example. Um, I was also to, to pick up on a theme that, that Erica touched on a little bit as well. I was also made consistently aware of some of the. Various accounts of police interference with journalists while reporting on the occupation in Ottawa. Um, early, we, the, the C H A issued a public letter to Ottawa's then interim police chief. Uh, reminding law enforcement about how the law actually protects the ability of journalists to access and report. On, uh, matters of public interest and not restrict them. Um, in that letter, which is available online and I'm happy to send a copy of to the People's Commission for your reference, if that would be of interest. Uh, you know, we went over the Justin Brake case, which was a precedent setting in its own right. Um, and more recently, the D C Supreme Court, uh, decision that was brought down about the illegal use of vast exclusion zones. This was in the context of the Ferry Creek protest on Vancouver Island. Um, uh, last summer or the summer before last, I'm sorry. Um. You know, there, there, there's a, there's sort of a truism, I guess, if you want to say in journalism that, that, you know, journalists don't really want to become part of the story. And I think that's. Uh, why, part of the reason why I'm here is because this is my role is to sort of step out from behind the. You know, sort of the, the veil of objectivity here and to, to be an honest broker and to be able to speak on behalf of many of my colleagues who. You know, rightfully might not feel comfortable sharing their personal views on some of these things. Um, but that's not, it, it, that's important and I know that not many journalists, you know, relish that spotlight. So I think, you know, taking the time to look into the issue of, of journalists, their, their impressions and experiences. Uh, is something that's very important. Um. I would say, just thinking as well, a little bit and reflecting on some of the so-called, you know, the lessons learned, if you will, of, of the convoy occupation. What's clear, what's clear to me right now is the world around us is in a crises of trust or, or lack thereof in many cases. Um, part of that equation is to recognize that the resources to ensure journalism thrives in smaller communities are stretched very thin. Uh, you know, a lot of the, there aren't. The decline of local news and the troubles of local news is something that's, uh, obviously has the, the attention of government. It has the attention of reporters across the country. Um, and it has the attention of readers who don't see some of the same features and coverage that they used to see in their, in their local newspaper or, um. You know, on their local radio stations or whatnot. Um, and while this sort of trend seems to increasingly hold true. Um, I'm here also to share with the commission that that necessarily can't be an excuse. By us as journalists to abandon our responsibility to citizens. Um, or to in any way shift away from journalism's core values to hold the powerful to account. Um, for their actions. And so in that way, uh, regardless of what happens or what has happened, journalists, I'm here to tell you, will continue to ask hard questions and to. Ensure the public's right to know is upheld. But to do so, um, I think we have to also recognize that we need to think more deeply about the roots of. The convoy and the occupation and everything that, that was, um, involved with it. Um, I think particularly what I've seen and this touches on what, uh, Erica was saying about sort of the relationships and. The online, offline blurring of spaces, uh, is the issue of harassment against journalists and that we have to see this as. Uh, a significant press freedom issue and one that's part of a movement and that the convoy in this regard was not just a one-off. Uh, event that sort of happened in, in isolation or in a vacuum. Uh, and I think ultimately until we implement this kind of mindset to understand that this is a systemic problem and not just an individualized problem. Um, that not enough is going to be done to combat hate's infectious qualities. Um, and I, lastly, I guess the last thing I would, I would bring to the commission's attention is to say that, you know, this is a reality that. Uh, is very pertinent to journalists on the hill. Um, and who are reporting in Ottawa, but this is happening right across the country almost every single day. So. I think the work of the, the People's Commission in this regard, um. You know, has, it will, will certainly echo, um, beyond, you know, the realm of, of center town and, and, and downtown Ottawa. Um, but also touches on a lot of the domestic, uh, challenges. Uh, and security issues that journalists face across the country. Um, so I'm happy to take questions and thank you very much for the invitation to participate.
Well, thank you so much, Brent. Again, really helpful in framing this for us, I think. Um, I'll, I'll lead with just one question that I have and then I'll, um, pass to Debbie and to Alex. Um, you had mentioned the police interference with journalists and if you could just expand on that. Um, I actually wasn't aware of that and obviously that's. Very serious, like serious enough for C H A to be issuing a letter outline, outlining case law as I understand it.
Yes, yes.
If you could just expand on like what, what types of incidents were happening, um. Uh, that would be useful.
Well, a lot of it was related to restrictions on where, where journalists could go and where they could not go. And I understand that, you know, there, this is a, a security situation. a security situation at play in a police matter. And so I'm I'm respectful of that, those restrictions to a degree. But I think what law enforcement needs to also understand is that they have a job to do, but journalists also have a job to do. And that, I can't recall whose point it made, I think it was Alex to say that, you know, a lot of the people were depending on media and journalists for the information that they needed to decide what their day was going to look like and the habits and and rituals that they were going to undertake for that day. Should they go for groceries? Should they not go for groceries? Should they, where should they take their dog or 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 other pet for a walk? You know, should they go visit family member today or wait till, you know, the day after? I think these were very important and so that those restrictions. This is again, not something just unique to the Ottawa Police or anything, but it's also that we've seen in regional police forces, the R C M P. But I can certainly provide to the to the commission a copy of our letter that has links to tweets from various auto reporters on the Hill in in Ottawa who who are able to document these particular instances so that you have a very precise examination of those.
That's great. That would be great. I know we would appreciate that. I have one follow up question. Was the was the reason given by the police for these restrictions generally related to safety concerns?
Well, we'd never actually really heard much from the police directly. This was something, I mean, generally speaking.
Yeah. So who imposed as the restriction?
At the time, it was the Ottawa Police Service.
Oh, the Ottawa Police Service.
Yes.
And so, but so did they issue reasons for what, like how they were determining where you could and couldn't?
Not to my recollection, not to my recollection.
But they're just saying you can't go here.
Yeah, usually, usually it's a fairly arbitrary determination on how this goes. You know, there are a one, one, and it can vary from individual officer to individual officer. Usually, you know, sort of the interpretation of how this works and the application of the rules and implementing the rules. Yeah, isn't isn't always the most consistent. So if there's something one of the, one of the members of the Ottawa Police Commission would like to to clarify, I'd be happy to to take a look at that, but I didn't receive anything saying, you know, here is the precise reason, but but safety, generally speaking, of course, is used as the, as sort of a catchall phrase.
I'm sorry, Anne, just the the final follow up.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
Were the journalists were coming to C A J with those concerns saying like, I'm unable to do my job? Like, I'm I'm not able to test the veracity of blah, 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 because I can't get to that site or?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes it was people, people couldn't take pictures of certain things, somebody couldn't have video of something. You know, these are, this is a public place. This is not a a private, a private function. It was, you know, an occupation taking place on the busiest streets in downtown Ottawa. And so again, like I understand law enforcement has a job to do, but so do journalists. And that needs to be balanced properly and not, you know, tipping the scales and exclusively in one, one direction or the other.
Thank you. And I'll pass now Debbie or Alex. Debbie, it looks like you're.
I was gonna say, the the question I wanted to ask was around pleasing to your parents. And so, Lailani, thank you for asking it, but this is more of a comment for you, Brent. I just wanted to commend you for representing your members and really speaking to their experiences and being willing to even go, you know, share with us that document and that letter that you folks had shared with the police services. I think it's really important from a labor perspective to to represent folks who are doing this work and journalists or workers and their work was impacted as a result of the convoy and everything around it. And so I just wanted to 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 share those words with you and commend you for joining us today.
Thank you. Well, it's it's not all me. I can say that for sure. There's a lot of people that could make this this sort of stuff happen. It just doesn't happen in in. It's not, it can't be all one person, but I really appreciate that. And, you know, to what Erica was saying before, just for, you know, for your information, there's a lot of work still going on with this issue of, you know, making sure the government is cognizant of the of the challenges that sort of impinge on media freedom in our country, whether it's legally, you know, from the legal perspective, from the police perspective, or from government, you know, there's, I think, I think we all need to be able to to make changes. And that includes our own profession and that includes social media companies as well. So I think that, you know, we all need, we all have lessons to learn from from this and and other related events too. So, yeah.
And I think that's over to me to 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 wrap things up. I am, I have two questions, which I hope I can sneak in, one of which I think is probably pretty short. The other one might be a little bit more expansive. First, I want to pick up on something, I guess, both Evan and and you have referenced, and that is the use of security guards. I remember several times as I was watching the news and and you'd sometimes see them in the corner of a shot, you know, behind a reporter, et cetera, and and the time thinking to myself, I'm not nuts, am I? Like this, this doesn't hap, this is unprecedented. This is just never happened before. And which of course is what Evan confirmed as well. And you've obviously highlighted it as a concern. And I'm just wondering if you could say a little bit more about why that's a concern. I mean, obviously, it's it's a concern in its most kind of direct and tangible sense of it represents the fact that journalists were at risk and thus needed to take that step. But I'm wondering, is is there something a bit more even insidious there in terms of of the kind of risk that poses to the to the role, the independence, the the ability of of journalists to apply their trade?
Yeah, no, well, absolutely. I think, you know, the the fact of having security guards is is to me a wake up call. And I do think, you know, Evan hit the nail on the head with sort of the overtones of, you know, January sixth and sort of seeing what what could happen. I remember when the convoy started going from at least the one in the eastern part of the country, going from, you know, up through the up the four O one through Toronto and Kingston. And, you know, we had a, was watching as, you know, news crews, their cruisers were being egged and windows were broken and taillights bashed in. And, you know, I I I think that, I think that definitely there is this this wake up call that needs to happen, that this isn't, this isn't normal behavior, but this is also part of the world we live in now. Where where people who espouse these kind of views are allowed to act with impunity and 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 to, you know, to freely propagate them online without any any hindrance. Look, I think, I think also this is part of an understanding that, you know, a recognition, I should say, of the concern that news organizations have on the part of protecting their staff. You know, nobody ever wants to, you know, get in the in the crosshairs of 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 any violence or anything like that, particularly when it's at home in a domestic situation like this. And so I I think news organizations did the most they could. And that in this case was was hiring security guards to ensure that their staff were protected. Were they needed? Depends. I'm not sure. You know, I wasn't, I wasn't there to say for every single individual, but I do know for some individuals, they were glad to have them. Because there was this view that, and I think Evan touched on it as well, that, you know, some journalists were sort of part of the problem, you know, that they were false fake news or whatever, you know, epithet you want to launch out there. But that they were were part of the conspiracy or in on it or trying to advance the government's position. And, you know, that that's, I mean, that's a failure of understanding what journalism is and what it does. I mean, journalists are fiercely independent. If you think, you know, that you're going to carry water for the government, you're sorely mistaken. But I do think that that's part of, part of why this was needed and why it was an unprecedented step in that regard. Because there was the view that, yeah, we're part of the problem. And if they're willing to try and write a letter to and attempt to overthrow the government, the Prime Minister, House of Commons and the Senate to form a a different political union, what what was also possible? I don't know. That's, that's definitely concerning. From journalism's part, I think, you know, this, we could do a better job of listening to people. And I think this was something that was a challenge. And I think, you know, some of what Evan said is it drives with what I've heard from other Hill reporters who are who are there trying to confront some of the biased views and say, well, how do you know what you know? Or to humanize yourself and to say, look, I'm, I'm, I'm Brent, or I'm Evan, or I'm Erica. And I'm here to try and tell a story, you know, what's your view on this? And how do you know what you know? Like any, any good reporter would do in covering a protest, covering a local business meeting or covering City Hall.
And my, and my other question actually picked up on something you you just referred to in that answer. But but was something I wanted to ask as well. And you you referenced that sense of impunity. And and of course, in your comments, I think you very powerfully summarized the ways in which both the scale, I I I'm, I think, but also the nature and severity of the kinds of of threats and intimidation and attacks that journalists were facing was unprecedented. And and that's all big concern, right? And and impunity only fuels that kind of thing. We know that with respect to human rights violations of any nature. So where was the police in this? Where should the police have been in this? I know that's a complicated question, or the relationship between police and the media needs to be a very carefully circumscribed one. I'm curious as to whether, and you're probably one of the best people to ask here as as someone with an organization over, you know, with overarching responsibility for journalists. Was there any way in which you expected any kind of response or or different action on the part of police in 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 reaction to those threats?
Yeah.
And if so, what should that have been?
Well, I mean, I think an acknowledgement of our our letter of concern would have been a nice, pretty simple first step. I think that we'd never heard anything back and it sort of just went off into the ether is, you know, somewhat telling. I'm not sure, you know, at the same time, to be fair, whether, you know, obviously we're the biggest priority for the Ottawa Police Service at the time of of the occupation. So that's, I'll, I'll, I'll give them a a mulligan on that one. But even after the fact, to not understand or to have a discussion about, you know, how to at least understand each other's positions, I think would have been something very beneficial. You know, this was a discussion, for example, we had with the R C M P, for example, I've spoken to officers there, particularly after, you know, situations like this have happened in the past where they've arrested journalists and to sort of understand what happened, what went right and or what went wrong, most importantly, and how do we fix it? You know, and I think, I think that's important. I do think, you know, from a to make this a teachable moment or whatever you want to call it, it's always good for law enforcement before a sort of an operation like this is is unleashed upon on a city, town, you know, community that there is a review of some of the basic principles of what a free press means, whether it is some of these case law issues, you know, the Bray case that we mentioned or others. You know, and again, just a reminder, I know, you know, at the federal level, there's usually, you know, a briefing book or a binder that is is put together to make sure that forces know, you know, the ins and outs, who are the people they're looking for, you know, all of that kind of detail. I think that's something that would be a useful best practice in all cases like this. And it's something that I've offered to the R C M P to put together or to consult on to make sure that that happens. And I would extend the same invitation to any police force in Canada, because I think, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Because every time something like this happens, it ends up taking me two or three days to try and unwind the situation. I'd rather spend two or three hours beforehand trying to get people prepared and familiarized with the situation so we don't have this happen continually.
A lesson unlearned in so many contexts, isn't it? Thanks so much for this, Brent. It was really helpful. You you really kind of pulled a number of the pieces together and I think given us a great overview. So thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Yeah, thanks very much, Brent. Appreciate your comments and your framing.
Right on. If you have any questions, happy to respond by email or phone or whatever you need.
Thanks.
Great.
So that brings us to the end of our hearing today. I wanted to thank everybody, Evan, Erica and Brent so much for coming forward and sharing your stories, your perspective as journalists and those representing other journalists. Super useful. And so thank you so, so much. For those who are also in attendance, thank you for being here as well. So it's important to let you know that this process continues. There's going to be other opportunities coming up for public hearings, some in person and online. And also other opportunities for you to share your stories and we highly encourage you to do so. So please go on our website, O P C dash C P O dot C A. Register to speak or to submit your comments and writing. And we also want to take the time to thank those who are behind the scenes, our lovely interpreters who've been taking the time to make this accessible from a language perspective. Their assistance has been super awesome, as well as the staff and the volunteers who helped us organize today's event. Please, please, please check out the website, follow us on social media to hear about upcoming hearings. We hope to see you again in some format. Thank you and have a good and safe night. Have a good one.
Good evening.